The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Call the meeting to order. Town council meeting to order. And start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to the roll call. Everyone, for the, obviously, for the public hearing is accounted for. We're all here. And next we will move on to the audience of citizens. Again, the line can form up here, wherever you want to form. Do you have any, anybody have any comments? No? Okay. Just, we'll wait a minute. Maybe somebody's rushing in for the last minute. Doesn't appear to be. Okay, we will close the audience of citizens. And we will move along to our meeting agenda, starting with our consent agenda. The first topic being, now...
You can take the consent all at once.
What's that?
You can do the consent all at once if you have a motion to accept the consent.
Oh, okay. All right. Fine.
I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as is. Three topics here.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so now we are to new business. The first topic of new business is, of course, what we just had the public hearing about, the Naresco lease agreement with Bank of America, Public Capital Corporation to fund the Naresco Energy Services Agreement for an amount equal to $8,785,701 with an interest rate lock of 2.99 percent, subject to Corporation Council approval and purchasing and finance. So, do we have a motion to start this for perhaps some discussion?
Sure. I have a motion to move to enter into a 20-year performance-based lease agreement with Bank of America Public Capital Corp. to fund the Naresco Energy Services Agreement for an amount equal to $8,785,701 with an interest rate lock of 2.99 percent, subject to Corporation Council approval.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have some discussion. We have some counselors, one of you guys want to... Like any comments?
Go ahead, John.
I said a question. This is a long-term agreement. These appliances being installed, if they had to be replaced during this agreement, who would be responsible for the cost?
Okay. Um, maybe, I don't know, Bob, would you...
Are the Naresco folks?
Are the Naresco folks here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, great. Okay, great. So, if you guys could come up, appreciate that. Just, probably just a few questions some of us might have about some issues. Appreciate your input.
Hello, Keith Taylor with Naresco.
Welcome.
Thank you. The maintenance of the equipment is the responsibility of the town. The equipment that's been installed, the expected useful life of the equipment will exceed, meter exceed the 20-year term, with the exception of something like lighting, where there are regular lamp and ballast replacements that need to occur, which is something that the town already does for their current equipment. So, there won't be an increase in maintenance with the newly installed equipment. And some of the, mostly the equipment which has passed its useful life now that's being replaced, the maintenance requirements for the new equipment will be lower than what you currently have.
I understand lighting and so forth is normal maintenance. I was more concerned like if a solar panel array failed after seven years, who would be responsible for replacing that?
Some of the solar equipment has a warranty that is 20 years. So, if it's covered under the normal warranty, that would be covered through the manufacturer. The panels, which I believe don't have a full 20-year warranty, then that would be the responsibility of the town if they did fail during the performance period.
So, some of it would be warranted and some of it wouldn't, is your answer?
Correct.
Well, just out of curiosity, what's the, what's the normal life of, is there a normal life of a solar panel? Do we know that?
Yeah, it's, 20-plus years is typical life expectancy of a panel.
I think maybe for the, for folks who are new on the council, you had mentioned that the last time you were here, that it was a 20-plus year is the kind of manufacturer life. But in fact, most solar panels that you've installed or that you know of go well beyond that. Can you just confirm that?
Yes, that's correct. Most of our deals, they don't go longer than 20 years, and the equipment continues to operate after it's installed.
And the final point, John Demodica from Naresco also.
Welcome.
The point that I would make as well is, under a guaranteed savings, energy savings, performance contract, we're on the hook throughout the term of the 18 and 1/2 years for assurance that the performance obligations are met, i.e. that the savings are achieved.
Okay. Good. Yeah?
I also just want to, for those in the audience and maybe for those new, to just clarify that while we're talking about a lease of $9 million, the expectation is not that that will be taxed to the town. There wouldn't be an expenditure to the town. It would actually be paid for based on savings we will see from the efficiencies of the work that Naresco is doing. So, it's not an expenditure of $9 million. We're actually going to be using that based on the savings that we're going to be seeing.
Great. Glad to get that on the record.
I just want to ask Attorney Weber, did you have any problems with the contract? I think someone had questions last time in the previous council, and you were going to review it.
Yeah, we did. It's been reviewed by me, by Jim Wren, by the engineering staff. I think Art and Doug, everybody's looked at it. We all had comments. Couple things were changed, carryover of savings. Each year is independent under Connecticut law, which in some states they're allowed to carry over. So, if they have a good year where there's savings, and the next year they break even and there's no savings, they can carry over. And they can't average. Every year is different. So, if there's excess savings in one year, we get the benefit of that. Every year of the contract, they have to achieve the guarantee.
Okay.
And it's really no different than if we bought equipment, we're leasing it. But putting Naresco aside, if we had equipment, we would have to look to the manufacturer warranty if we get a 20-year solar panel and something goes wrong. Those are the risks you take in any transaction. But they, we get all of the manufacturer warranties assigned to us through this contract, through Naresco.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just like Mr. Wren, if you would take just a moment and talk about the proposed amortization schedule, that would help us understand the timing of it. You know, I think a lot of times we hear 20-year loans, and we kind of wonder, you know, how long is that going to take to take place here? And then I have an additional comment about some of the savings. But, in addition to the amortization schedule, if you would also address the interest rate and the PURA, Public Utility Regulatory Agencies' interest rate buy-down and how that relates? Because I think you received a question earlier about the interest rate and potentially bonding.
That is correct. So, there's a couple of other points I want to make as well. Some questions I've gotten from councilor, certain council members and other people. So, I want to share that information with everybody. As was already stated, this will not add to the debt service budget. So, it is a formal lease that will be reported in the financial statements as a lease. However, the lease payments will not begin on this lease, even though we close, we get the proceeds. The proceeds will go in escrow to pay for the projects. But this lease payment will not begin until April of 2017, until such time as we've realized enough savings to start using those savings to pay back the principal and interest on the loan. So, all of that will be paid out of savings. We're going to have to, the town manager and I are going to have to work on the budget and how we're going to show this in the budget. Also, the savings are split between schools and the town. So, another clarification point I want to make is, I was asked the question if our electricity budget on the town side is only $320,000, and we're seeing savings of more than that in some cases. But that's just the town side. The Board of Ed's side of that is over $900,000. In addition to that, there's another $300,000 in the police budget for streetlights, which we're going to be talking about in the near future. So, the actual electricity budget is over $1 million. So, the other point I wanted to make is that the other benefit of doing it this way is all of these projects that are going to be covered would have had to get into the capital improvement plan at some point, and we would have had to put those through the budget. We are addressing a number of those projects all in one fell swoop. This has been done in Southington. This has been done in East Hartford, where we are by far not the first to do it this way. So, I think it's a great benefit to the town. Now to the questions Counselor Evans asked me. As far as the interest rate is 2.99 percent with an effective rate of 2.83 percent. It was actually the second lowest bid. However, as explained in the council item, there were multiple reasons why we selected Bank of America. And I do have a representative from the bank to talk to you a little bit about the PURA arrangement. Bank of America is, has been the financial institution that has been used by all of these other towns. They are by far the most experienced in this particular concept. And so, I felt that it was, you know, much more prudent to go with somebody who really had the experience in this particular area. The lowest bidder was TD Bank, who to my knowledge has not done any of these arrangements anywhere else. So, that was the rationale why we went with the slightly higher interest rate. And one other point I wanted to make is, the question has come up, is why didn't we just bond this? And that was actually something that I questioned at the very beginning of this project, and I talked to bond council and several other towns about it. This isn't something we could issue one of those short-term notes at 1 percent, because those notes, as people who have been on the council are familiar with, we roll those over from year to year and we make a pay down. When you do that, the IRS requires you to make a 1/20th pay down of the principal. Well, we don't want to be making a 1/20th of $9 million payment every year. So, the note is really ruled out. So, now you get to a bond. Well, bond rates right now are 3 percent plus higher than this rate. In addition, we have substantial debt issuance costs that we have to pay when we do a bond, bond council. We have to have a rating from Standard and Poor's, which is much more expensive than you might think. So, we eliminate all this by doing it as a lease. So, that's the rationale for doing it as a lease. And now I would like to ask Holly Andriozzi to come up from Bank of America to talk about the PURA pay down and how that affects this arrangement as well.
I'm Holly Andriozzi. I'm, excuse me, with Bank of America Public Capital Corp. It's a wholly owned subsidiary of Bank of America. I work in the Energy Services Department, and the only thing we do is finance energy performance contracts. So, you know, our group is dedicated to financing these projects, and we've done many, many projects in Connecticut, as Jim had just pointed out. We do administer an interest rate buy-down for PURA, a 1 percent interest rate buy-down. And both Eversource and United Illuminating are participants in this program. The funding for this program comes from the utilities. Actually, it probably comes from the ratepayers through a system benefit charge that's put on all of your utility bills. But the money is put to good use, and it provides a 1 percent interest rate buy-down on qualifying measures. Measures that qualify are measures that reduce pressure from the grid. So, if you reduce electricity or produce electricity, those measures should qualify for the buy-down. So, in your particular case, you're doing a fair amount of solar, so that produces electricity. So, that should qualify. And then any other measures that reduce electricity should also qualify. I will say that Bank of America does not determine what qualifies and what doesn't qualify. In this case, Eversource will give you the final determination as to what qualifies. I just made an estimate based on, you know, my quick review of the measures, that 50 percent should qualify. But in fact, it's sounding like, in talking to Naresco, probably you should get more than that. So, that was just, you know, my rough estimate. So, the way it will work is, the transaction will close with a rate of 2.99 percent. Naresco will do the installation of the entire project, and then Eversource will complete the review on what qualified and what didn't qualify. And then the interest rate will be adjusted. It will be adjusted downward to 2.83 or hopefully something, something less. We've structured it so you have no payments during the construction period. So, the buy-down would begin once your payments begin.
Great. Thank you very much. While everyone's up there, all the experts, any other questions from anybody?
Yeah, may I just add to that question about the amortization? You'd mentioned about the 50 percent qualification. I seen amortization schedule that gives an average life. And at this point, it looks like the average life of this amortization is about 13.6 years. Mr. Wren, if you could comment on that and potentially the basis of that. And Holly, you may be able to do that.
Yeah. That's simply a mathematical calculation based on this amortization. This was structured around the projected savings. Okay? That's how, that's how the amortization was structured. You want to make sure that you have excess, well, you have excess savings each year. So, I don't know if you've looked at the cash flow, but it looks like you have, did they all get this?
I have comments.
Oh, it's okay. Yeah, okay. The excess cash flow. You should have like $65,000 in excess cash flow in the first 10 years, and then it goes down to, I think, like $39,000 after the buy-down. So, it was really just a structuring. That's how it was structured. And what the weighted average life is, how quickly you're paying it back, right? So, it's, it's not a level debt service amortization by any means. It's mirroring the savings. So, I don't know if that answers your question or not?
That does. And I think it's illustrative for the public, and that's why I brought it to the attention, so that everyone's aware of that situation. I do, Mayor, I do want to comment too, that as an employee of Eversource, I do, I have had discussions with my management on whether there's a conflict of interest here, because this is with an entity that is then working with a regulated, regulatory-controlled entity. In this case, the conservation load management, which is paid out of the ratepayer's fee, that there's high regulation on that. And that I find that I have no conflict in this and am supportive of that, even with the incentive dollars that are associated with that coming from Eversource and supportive of this particular approach.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dave. Anything else? We good? Pretty good? Thank you all for your information. Really appreciate that input. So, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Some moved? Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's go on and forward and save energy. Next piece of new business, topic number two here, is the approve the donating of one preschool program registration, donation value of $65, conducted out of the Berlin Parks and Recreation Department Special Revenue Account for Kensington Nursery School. Do we have a motion on this for purposes of discussion?
Sure. I have a motion to move to approve donating one preschool program registration conducted out of the Berlin Parks and Recreation Department Special Revenue Account for the Kensington Nursery School. The donation will be used as a raffle prize for the Kensington Nursery School Annual Fundraiser Breakfast with Santa for residents and non-residents on Saturday, December 5, 2015.
Great. Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Number three, approve the purchase of auto parts using the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services Contract Number 11PSX0190 from Napa Auto Parts. Do we have a motion on this?
Okay, I have a motion to approve the purchase of auto parts using the above State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services Contract Number 11PSX0190 from Napa Auto Parts for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Number four, authorize contract utilizing Capital Region Council of Governments Contract Number 65 to purchase road salt. Do we have a motion on this topic?
Yes. I move, I have a motion to move to authorize a contract utilizing the Capital Region Council of Governments Contract Number 625 to purchase treated road salt for snow and ice control for the state low bidder, Cargill Deicing Technology through June 30, 2016, at the current price of $84.45 per ton.
Great. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Yeah?
Jim, since you're here, maybe you can answer. I know in the past, there's been some concern about how this affects the trucks and the plows, and I know that you are looking at possibly some solutions to that. Just curious if, how it went last year and if we still have those concerns.
We're still putting on products, so we still have the same concerns. We are neutralizing and washing trucks as much as we can, actually spraying on a neutralizer that takes them in a corrosive way. But we're still having those issues.
Okay.
And it's the same issues that everybody is fighting right now.
Now, I'm assuming, I've read a lot about this too. I'm assuming that our poor personal vehicles as well are affected by this stuff? Is that, is that true?
Yeah, it is true.
Yeah?
Yes. They'll tell you that you need to maintain your vehicle a little better.
Right.
That washing the vehicle and washing the undercarriage is a necessity now. But they don't tell you that, they also sell the neutralizer, the neutralizer material that's on your truck or your car. So...
So, are we purchasing the neutralizer from them?
We are purchasing neutralizer. We purchase neutralizer through Neutral Wash. And what happens is, the vehicle comes in, it gets put on a lift, and they go underneath it, and they'll use pump sprayers to spray the material on there. It'll then soak into the unit, and then it'll be rinsed off.
Now, now, does the water, the water activates this?
Correct. Moisture activates it.
Activates this product?
Yeah. The product is actually a bluish-green when it comes.
Right.
Because it is coated, so it doesn't corrode, or it doesn't have its corrosive properties when it's sitting. It's put into the trucks, and then as it comes out, it either takes the moisture out of the ground, or it takes the moisture out of the snow or ice or rain or whatever's coming down. That washes basically the coating off, and then it begins to activate.
Interesting. So, do you have to wash the trucks every time? I mean, it's probably...
We wash the trucks after every use.
Do you?
Yes. They're not neutralized after every use, but they are washed with a high-pressure hose after every use.
Right.
And we still have the same problems.
Right. No other, no other, I take it this is the best, I mean, the best product now that we, I mean, that's just what we need to use, I guess, right?
Yeah, some of the, Jack, maybe from Public Works, or one of them could answer the effects of it on the roads.
Yeah.
I could tell you about the effects on vehicles.
I mean, the whole state that's using it, right? I think this product?
There, a good part of the state is. There are some municipalities that are getting out of it.
Right.
But, yeah, for the most part.
Huh. Interesting.
Question is, what's it going to do to the environment down the road?
Ah, right. Okay. Yeah, that's always an issue. Thanks a lot. Great. Okay.
Mayor?
We have... Yes? Sorry, Dave.
Just wanted to ask a question, because we are going through the Council of Governments from the Capital Region, and if we had available to us, if it's publicly available or not, the quotes that may have been collected through, I believe it was Nagatuck and the other Council of Governments, if there was any comparison to that available?
It may be available. I have not checked that since we're not part of the Nagatuck Valley.
Yeah, the reason I, for that question is just to validate our decisions and see whether we're moving in the right direction. So, I would appreciate if that could be found and forwarded to the council.
Anything else? We're good?
Yep.
All right, so, let's move the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Number five, topic, approve the transfer of $2,500 from the contractual services account to the GIS programming account. Do I have a motion on this topic?
Yes. I move, I have a motion to move to approve a transfer of $2,500 from the contractual service account to the GIS programming account, and also to move to waive the bidding procedure and award the contract for GIS annual maintenance to New England Geo System of Middletown, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $28,500, since this is the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? I just have one question, just for my benefit, being the, being the new guy. Just outside of the bidding, Denise, I mean, but just, I mean, obviously, it's the best interest. I get that.
This is for the maintenance contract only. The, the cost of the actual GIS system is over $100,000 at least. This is just the maintenance each year.
I got you. Oh, okay.
It would cost more to replace it than to, to...
Maintain.
We have no question, but to maintain it, yeah.
Right. Okay, great. Thanks for the info. Appreciate that. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next, appointments of the constables. We have, I guess we had, I think, four that were in the packet before, right? And then we have three, three additional ones, right? Up here, so we do have a total of seven, which, which is the amount we could have, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Just again, from my own information, perhaps, just the constables, I mean, I read the statutes on it, but just for practical purposes in town, I'm just curious, how active are they? What, you know, what, just out of curiosity?
Generally, they're used to collect the delinquent personal property taxes from businesses. At least, they can do other functions in their own right, but that's what the town uses them for, basically. It depends on how active they want to be. I think when I was the tax collector, we used to divide up the personal property delinquent accounts among the active constables. If people didn't care to do it or didn't wish to, we didn't make them collect things that they weren't comfortable collecting. But some are more active than others, and they're, they're entitled to their fees, and they do other items. They can serve process within the town as well, just like a marshal.
Oh, they can do what the marshals do, but just in town?
Just within the town.
Yeah, okay.
But for our purposes, the tax office uses them to collect the personal property delinquents.
Perhaps a little-known part of what the constables do. Like, I have no back taxes for them, like, I'm knocking on my door. So, I guess that's why I've never run into them, which is a good thing. We'll keep it that way. And any other questions or concerns or anything before we move forward? So, we have, I guess, so we have seven. Have we all had time to review the applications? I mean, I guess the other four were already, have been there, right? I guess?
Yeah.
So, make a motion to appoint the seven constables that have applied for the position. Or, I mean, can we have a motion to do that? Or is that, is that the...
Yeah, please, the nomination.
Okay.
And it doesn't require a second.
Okay. So, so someone else should, can I do that, or does someone else do that?
Because you could do it if you wanted to.
Yeah, someone else.
Make a motion to accept the applications for the seven constables that were presented in front of us tonight.
Okay, we don't...
And I will read, let me read the names?
Well, yeah, why don't you read the names?
We have John Bakero from 18 Brownstone Road. We have Paul Eschew from 218 Brook Metal Road. We also have Ronald Lindgren from 207 Robindale Drive, and Robert Zipadelli from 6 Schultz Road. And we have three new ones here. Joe Mata from 69 Eastbrook Terrace, and John O'Brien, 12 Vineyard Drive, and Anthony and John O'Brien, 12 Vineyard Drive and Anthony Del Franco, Del Franco, sorry, 225 Oxiote Drive.
Okay, great, are there any other nominations? No? So we're going to close, obviously, the nominations and we're going to vote, right? So we're going to vote to, vote to accept these seven constables, these appointments. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the motion carries, so congratulations to the reappointed constables and to the new constables, good luck in collecting taxes. Okay, next, Town Manager's Report.
I don't have any formal report, the only thing I want to remind the council members and especially the new council members is that the orientation for council is this Thursday, the 3rd, at 5:30 here in the town hall. All are invited though, you don't have to be a new council member to attend, it'll be in the Town Manager's Conference Room, it'll take till about 8 o'clock, I've asked different department heads to come in and kind of give an overview quickly of what they do and it should be a worthwhile exercise for those that are interested. I hope that you can come, I'll try to get some light fare, as they call it, so that you won't leave starving.
Great, that's good, good to hear Denise, usually hungry about that time, so that's a good thing. Is that it?
Yes.
I have a question for a Town Manager. I understand a lady was injured on the front walkway.
Yes.
And no one called an ambulance, do we have a protocol and is there anything we're doing to address the hazard out there?
My understanding was that there was, that the police were contacted and she was assisted. Helen Riggins was there and took care of it and there had been.
Oh, the police were.
Yes, they were contacted. She might be able to speak to, I think she just fell right outside of the door, it wasn't in the area down below, which is always an area of concern, and I don't know, I know it has been reported to our insurance company, but she was assisted by the police.
Okay. Should we be addressing the trip hazards out there, is there a need for our building department to deal with it or?
I can certainly have someone look, I'm not sure exactly where she fell, I thought it was right outside the door rather than, yeah, Helen can, she was present.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Helen.
I actually wasn't present because it was just a handicap ramp on the agenda, so I decided to turn it over to Maureen, then this is what happens, but I was, I handled it from my house and the documentation, Lorraine was walking, or the person was walking into the building and was about 20 feet away from the front door. We do have photographs of where the accident exactly took place and Maureen contacted me, I immediately contacted the police who brought an ambulance. The person refused medical care, but later that night decided they needed to go to the hospital and they are now, were transported from the hospital to rehab. So we did notify also our risk management person who has evaluated the spot where it happened and there's not any obvious trip hazard in the location that it happened, but I would let that, which is Steve Wozniak, I would let him speak to that, but the protocol is that if anyone is injured, well, my protocol is, and I'm sure it's everyone else's, that I'm not an emergency responder, that I immediately contact the police, so as soon as my manager texts me and I immediately, she should have, she should have contacted the police, I contacted the police in a matter of seconds, the police were there, they contacted the ambulance, the person refused the service, then later decided they needed to go to the hospital. We then, the next day, notified our insurance agent who has contacted me today just to do a follow-up on it and it's just a wait and see at this point what happens. But I have, we did, when I talked to, and I also talked to Steve Wozniak that night when it was going on, he was available for me to talk and he said, just get the exact spot so he can evaluate it, so we did and I feel like that it's, the protocol is you call the emergency responders who are trained to deal with this immediately.
Oh, it was, sounds like it was handled correctly, as long as the police were notified, that's their job.
Immediately, immediately.
My main interest is, I know there's some trip hazards out there, is that something we need to look at since somebody was injured in the area, maybe not exactly where that lady fell, but there are some other issues out there.
With our new engineer, I agree with you and I'd like to have some of those, Denise and I actually talked about that earlier, I'm not saying they are or they aren't, but I think that someone certainly needs to evaluate it now that it's settled. You being the construction expert, I think you and I could probably agree on some things.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks Helen. Yeah, I would agree, I mean, I don't think we know if there are or not hazards, at least the non-professionals don't know that, but, and Charlie, I know you're in the trade, but I think it's worth just evaluating it just to make sure everything's safe walking into our town hall. Okay, any else? Any other questions on that topic or Town Manager's Report? So we're down to the special committee reports.
Yes, I have a couple here, just a reminder, Jim Ren wanted me to remind people that we have a special meeting of the Audit Committee of the Town Council on Thursday, December 17th at 5:30 PM, right? So far, it's going to be at the Town Manager's Conference Room at this point. Okay, and the second one is, I passed out here a preliminary schedule for the upcoming year, we will probably vote on this next Town Council meeting, just for the people here, new April is probably one of the most difficult months. The budget hearing last year was on the 8th of April, so we probably should have it on the 6th because the next week is school vacation, right, the April break, and I guess typically we have a Town Council meeting after that to discuss, you know, the comments that we hear, last year was on that school vacation, I was away, so just like anybody's input, whether we have it, you know, in the next two days after that hearing or wait till the next week. And then the referendum vote is April 26th, correct?
And is the 5th on here, when it has to be to the state, May 5th, the red?
Last year was the 10th. I was just putting, you know, we have from Tuesday, we could probably do it on Tuesday, the Town Council meeting, but we have till the 10th, that's what Kate Wall told me.
Just a reminder also, and it's not necessarily a formal Town Council meeting, but in March, we usually have the evening meetings for the Budget Committee and it usually is the entire membership, but you can think about whether there's been differences each year, whether you want to try to do one or two full weeks of every night or you'd rather spread the joy out for two or three weeks during March, but, you know, it usually ends up to be about four nights per week for two weeks at least if you do it all together and it depends on how happy you want to be each week or if there's scheduled vacations or anything, you know, but that's a busy time.
Yeah, I did put that in there, I figured I'd get some input from the Budget Committee.
So we'll think about that, consolidate the pain or spread it out. Okay, any other committee? We're good with that?
Mayor, just for the Budget Committee, I will reach out to the council here and look for a little input on that after having a little bit more discussion with the Finance Director and with the Town Manager and structure it in a way that we'd have some discussions on, or things that we could address and talk about during those sessions ahead of time and that we wouldn't have to work with some last minute things that may come up from different boards or committees, we'd like to have some substance to talk about going into those and we'll work to provide as much as we possibly can, you know, an example is highlighting the twice a year tax payment and the impact on that. I think we're all interested in seeing the cost of that and certainly we know some of the benefits to the individuals that it could help out, so we'll highlight those best we can and pull those to the top so we can have a good acting discussion. Mayor, thanks.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else? We're good? So down to counselor communications, do we have any topics we want to talk about? Fun trips you've been taking? I just do have one thing, we are putting together RFP for Corporation Council, we extended, you know, you to March, Bob, and don't take this the wrong way because I don't want you to, but strongly encourage you, of course, to apply and as well as whoever else comes in and, you know, we'll review it and see where we go from there, but, and I'm looking for all the counselors before we put it out, I think we're going to try and put it out next week, I think, right Dave? Is that what we're, is that what we're?
This week or next?
So.
Going to get some comments?
Do you guys have any comments, please, looking for comments, you know, whatever you think, we'll just put that out and we'll kind of go forward from there.
Do I send them to you, email comments or to you?
Yeah, you can send them, yeah, that's fine. And we'll just take it from there, we'll put that out and we'll move forward with that, so. Any other comments, counselors' comments, anything else? We're good? All right, we're good, so that ends that. Where are we at? Okay, so acceptance of minutes? Do we have both these?
We have to do separately.
Right. So the October 20th, 2015, which I don't have them, I gotta, I gotta have you deliver the packet to me probably because I can print the whole thing out, so. I'm used to that, planning and zoning, they just sent them to us, so that's kind of what I got used to, but I understand what, they have to be delivered now or something? Do you mail the packets out out of curiosity? Do we mail them to the counselors or? I know they're online.
They're delivered, yeah, they're delivered the Friday.
Yeah, warn your neighbors, the police at your house.
The police have to deliver them? Okay, well, maybe you could check, make sure nobody broke in that day too, like to walk around the house and we can get two for one out of that officer that day. No, that's fine.
Do we have to get paper?
No, no, you don't have to, no, I just.
You can stop my paper ones. I get.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Thanks.
I find it just prompts me to look at it quicker than sometimes I don't, print it out or look at it online, so. Anyway, we'll work on that. Okay, so the October 20th, 2015, we have a motion to approve those minutes? Can now, my question is actually.
You have to abstain.
Right, I have to abstain, yeah, okay, I was going to say, obviously. Yeah, obviously, we weren't here then, we were knocking on doors then, Kristin.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the Town Council Meeting on October 20th, 2015.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Obviously, I abstain.
I abstain.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so minutes are approved and now for the November 17th.
I have a motion to accept the Town Council Meeting Minutes from November, excuse me, 17th, 2015.
Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so those carried. Okay, great, so now we will, that ends our public portion of the meeting and we would move into our executive session.
These are the people to invite.
Okay, yep, the executive session's real estate, General Statute, Section 1 through 206D, discussion of the selection of a site, sale or purchase of real estate by the town, Beckley Road, Chamberlain Highway and Apple Lane. We, of course, will invite in Denise McNair, Bob Weber, Chris Edge, Jim Mahoney and Helen Riggins. And we will.
Make a motion to have a second.
Motion, yeah.
That's your motion, is to have somebody second?
Yeah, somebody second the.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So we would now ask to take a break while we.
Yep.
So we'll end the meeting, motion to adjourn, public portion of the.
Wait, that comes up.